All right, we'll call a meeting. Laura, please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening and welcome, everyone. Um, boy, Bree, will you take the roll call today, please?
Mayor King.
President.
Councilmember at large, Austin. Councilmember Fisher.
President.
Councilmember Obala.
Present.
Councilmember Helly.
Present.
Councilmember Posma.
Present.
Councilmember Baskin.
Present.
Councilmember Waller. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Bree. Item number one is a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item number two is approving our minutes from our September fifteenth and September twenty-second, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Under recognitions and awards, we have, I think, three items, two on the agenda, one to add. Um, introduction of our part-time CSO cadet, Chief McKeen, Michael Hanson.
Stand up. We do have community service officers that work for the Austin Police Department. Uh, one of those positions is a half-time role, and we've been really intentional about gearing it towards not only the community service aspect, but also cadet position, looking to foster career go- growth for those seeking to become full-time law enforcement officers. Uh, Mr. Hanson here is a 2016 graduate of Austin High, spent nine years in the Marine Corps. He's still in the reserves, uh, left with the rank or current rank of Staff Sergeant, which is obviously an incredible accomplishment. Uh, he's going to RCTC to finish school and hopefully be available to challenge the post-test and look to be hired by departments this spring. Uh, so we're welcoming onboard today. Very excited to have him. Obviously, like I said, he's bringing us in Austin a host of skills, uh, that really, for a 20-hour position, are just incredible to have. Uh, we've teamed him up with Ernesto Cantu. Ernesto did tell me he missed his introduction twenty-some years ago. But we've kind of got, you know, you know, the best of both worlds getting trained in. Ernie just made top ten for overall city seniority, so a good partnership here. And, uh, Michael's certainly learning from, uh, the longest tenure, one of the best CSOs we've had. So very excited to, uh, welcome, uh, Mr. Hanson to the Austin Police Department.
Right on. Thank you, Chief McKeen. Thank you and welcome, Michael. And you are in good hands with Ernesto, no doubt about it, and the rest of APD. I think the cadet program is relatively new, might be our first hire in the CSO cadet.
This will be the second one officially called the CSO cadet. Uh, our agency did hire the prior one. Uh, prior to that, that part-time CSO was also hired by our, by our agency. And we've had success with some of our full-timers over time, either going to us or going to another agency. So it really is a good opportunity. They're doing, they're doing those community service duties, they're going out there, um, doing everything we would expect of them. But we know that hopefully at the end of the day, they're a successful candidate with our agency. Uh, I already mentioned two of them. I'm aware of at least one opening in June coming up that, uh, you can be for. Uh, but, uh, like I said, it's been a good program. We've hired the last two in that, uh, part-time role. And certainly, I think, uh, Mr. Hanson's future is bright as well.
Right on. Great. Well, welcome again. Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, also under, uh, recognitions award presentation, the Artworks Festival City Art Award. Laura, Obala, you guys were the selection committee. Who's got to kick us off here?
I would like to introduce, uh, the Austin area arts personnel. Um, Kelsey Ritchie, the acting executive director, and Lisa Dunlap, co-chair of the festival. And, uh, we can take it from here.
Hey, um.
Hi, Lisa. Welcome.
Thank you. This is the piece that, uh, Laura and Obala chose, um, to be hung at, in the City Hall. And the artist is Promila Kumar. She does, um, mixed media, she's a mixed media artist from Illinois, and she loves to celebrate color. And this is called Galaxy Circle. Now, I know that the two of you had some really specific reasons why you chose this piece. Do you want to share that?
Um, Obala is graciously allowing me to go first. We really, uh, wanted, uh, to find something that, that celebrated, um, both diversity and unity. And so we felt like this circle that has a lot of different materials, a lot of natural materials, and a lot of color was a really great representation of Austin as a community. Um, we're stronger and more beautiful because of our diversity, and we are, um, pulled together, uh, as a, as a team, as a community to, to work together. So that's what we were hoping to represent.
Yeah, I supporting the idea that when I look at that, uh, you know, as you can see is galaxy. I see when I look at the sunset from my neighborhood in Nature Center, when the sunset go, you can see how the colorful it is. And also when the sunrise, when I wake up every morning on a Saturday that I don't work, I feel like, hey, these represent Austin and how beautiful it is to have something like this in City Hall. So this is why we, we choose it. And, um, the artist, um, to see that people traveling from out of state, coming and celebrate what we do here, that mean Austin is moving in a great progress.
Thank you. And this was her first year in Austin. She was very happy to be here and be chosen.
Yeah, I think, I think she was pretty surprised.
Yeah.
So it was great, it was a great experience.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
And then I just want to thank the city for partaking in the sitting board again this year. It's amazing to offer awards. It makes our festival, um, more attractive to August, to weekends. And to know that it's in a public building is really important. So thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Kelsey, for all the work you're doing in the, uh, as an interim director. And then, uh, Lisa, you and your co-chair and your committee did an amazing job again with the, uh, Artworks Festival, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work. I know it's a ton of work.
It's a labor of love, believe me.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, folks.
We'll see you next year.
Yeah.
And Craig, you have a welcome in sorts of Melissa.
Yes, um, we have an item later on the agenda as well, so, um, Melissa Wilson, I was going to do it at my comments. It's ended the meeting, but since there's something on the agenda, Melissa Wilson has agreed to be the interim finance director. So I wanted to both let council know and publicly, uh, thank her for willingness to step forward in that position as we look for a new finance director, so, uh, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Craig. Uh, moving on to item number four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, motion carries. Uh, moving on to public hearings, um, we have, uh, item number five, reviewing a tax abatement application from Bigelow Lennon for approval or denial of the abatement. Craig?
Uh, thank you, Mayor members. This is at eighteen oh one Twelfth Avenue Northeast in the Nature's Ridge subdivision, estimated value at $300,000, a four-bedroom, three-bath, bath home. It is in conformance with our adopted policy, and this is a public hearing.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, anyone here in the public wishing to speak? Um, item number five. Hearing done. Counsel, any questions or comments on five? Otherwise, looking for a resolution approving.
Moved to approve.
Second. Second.
Uh, Bree.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Uh, moving on to item number six through twelve, there'll be public hearings. So we'll be holding a public hearing for these items in the council pack, and all of which pertain to assessments. Each property owner has mailed a notice regarding the hearing, and a notice of hearing was published in the Austin Daily Herald. The clerk's office requesting the council adopt the assessments as outlined in the resolution presented tonight. Property owners have until October thirty-first to pay the assessment without incurring interest. If they do not pay by that date, the assessment will be added to their property taxes. And what we're going to do here is I'll go right through the, start with six. Uh, generally, what happens is when you, uh, come to the microphone, you'll air your grievance, if you will, uh, state your point. But generally speaking, it, it seems like it's worked in the past to, uh, listen to what the item of issue is for that property owner, and then ask that they meet or arrange a meeting with the department head that's here, uh, in the well here tonight, and then discuss that, uh, item. And generally, what we've done in the past is approve them here. And then if there is a carve-out, uh, from the department head, we'll go back and we'll take that one off the assessment rules if it needs to be. If nothing changes, it's approved, so it'll go forward. But I think it just is, uh, the, the subject matter experts are, are the department heads, so that's what we would, we will defer to. But I'll, I'll take item number fi- six first, the public hearing on hazardous housing abatement. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak on that assessment, item number six, hazardous housing abatements? Okay, hearing done. Looking, counsel, any questions or comments? Otherwise, looking for resolution adopting the assessment rule.
So moved.
Well, second.
Bree?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember... Nope, that's it. Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Usually, there's two more, so I get it. Uh, moving on to item number seven, a public hearing on assessments for the miscellaneous sidewalk and driveway projects. Is anybody here in the public wishing to speak on item number seven regarding sidewalk and driveway projects? Hearing done, seeing none. Counsel, any questions or comments? Otherwise, looking for resolution adopting the assessment rule for that.
So moved.
Second.
Bree?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Item number eight is public hearing on assessments for snow removal. Is anyone here in the public wishing to speak on the item number eight, uh, snow removal assessment? Hearing done, seeing none. Counsel, any comments or questions? Otherwise, looking for resolution.
Moved to approve. Second.
Bree?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Item number nine is a resolution on a public hearing for assessments on garbage and junk removal. Anyone here in the public wishing to speak on item number nine? Hearing none, seeing none. Counsel, any comments or questions? Otherwise, looking for resolution adopting the assessment rule.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bree, please.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Item number 10 is resolution on a, and a public hearing on assessments for weed and grass removal. Anyone here from the public wishing to speak on this item? Please come up to the microphone, sir, and, uh, when you get here, we just need your name and address and what you're here to talk to us about. Welcome. Name and address, please.
Uh, Shane Rose. The address there is, uh, one oh four, is it one oh four Third Avenue Southeast, I believe? Been so long since I've been there.
Okay. What can I do for you tonight, Shane?
Um, so I've gotten two notices that, well, originally, when the property burnt down, I tried to forfeit the property to the county, tried forfeiting to the city. Um, I don't have the money to repair it. I was told to board the property up. Uh, my dad was going over there mowing and everything else. I think that, uh, $427.50 is a bit extreme, and then this one here is for an additional $275, I think, for literally a half hour's work of each time. And I just literally went by there now, and I'm not sure, I don't have my glasses on, but... I'm not sure when this says it was mowed, but I know it hasn't been mowed within a week or week and a half, and I just got this letter today. So, um, I still plan, I got court on Thursday. I mean, I, I don't know what to do with the property. I can't afford to fix it, you know? And I'm, I, I don't live in the area, you know? I mean, the back half of it burnt. When I originally bought the property, I wasn't even able to put power onto it. Because when they put the road through there or whatever, something about the concrete truck or whatever took the power out, which I bought as-is, I wasn't aware of that. Um, but I left town, got myself in a mess of trouble, sobered up, been sober for four years and stayed out of town. You know, so I, I, I don't know what to do. I mean, if, obviously, if I could afford to pay this to mow my grass, the house would be fixed, you know?
Yeah, so unfortunately, when you got notice, have you met with Jason Seahan yet? This falls under the parking wreck. I think I'm going to do what I kind of said in the beginning, is make an appointment with Jason to meet with him the next day or two, uh, and see if there's some kind of resolution. Otherwise, you may have to just somehow pay it. But you, the land is, or the property now belongs to the county?
Well, so originally, when, when, when the back half of it caught fire, which has been over a year, I tried to forfeit it to the city and to the county. Just, I can't fix it, take it before all, you know, stuff like this starts occurring and the mess. And, you know, and I was just there now, I don't know neighbors, kids, whatever, but I mean, they've tore through the sheds, there's...
Yeah, seems like we've got a bigger problem than just the lawn mowing. If that property does become the county's, I don't know if you can talk to Scott Felton, the, uh, auditor treasurer, and see if he can speed things up if you're willing. If you're a willing participant, letting it go to the county.
I, I was willing to hear, over a year ago to do that.
I think it might be a conversation with Scott Felton and the county auditor treasurer's office might be helpful to get it out of your hands and under the county. Until then, I'd suggest that you could meet with Jason, maybe get an appointment set up, see what you can find.
Do you have a car I can get or something?
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Anywhere, anywhere, anybody else wishing to speak on the, the grass and weeds, item number 10?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, there was a, uh, a letter at the desk, council desk, um, just for your background, for Jesse Deisher, I believe. Uh, we sent notice on six thirteen twenty-five, recheck on six twenty-three twenty-five. Uh, and the contract mower was sent on six twenty-five. Uh, there was only one letter, no citation, only charged the $75 admin fee, like sixty-seven fifty for mowing, just for your background.
So we, we had one written objection to the grass?
Right, but sounds like some of the facts are a little bit off, but just for the background information for council.
And is Jesse here?
For that, for that name on our assessment list, it's three oh seven fifty?
Do you have a couple of properties?
Lot seventeen.
Is, is Mr. D, what is it, Jesse? Is Jesse here tonight?
E-I-S-H-E-R.
No, he's not here tonight. So we got a letter. Whatever the value is, we got a letter. So, um, with that, looking to, uh, looking for a resolution adopting the assessment rule, and if the department head or some other circumstances come to light, we'll pull that one out, the one that spoke to us tonight.
So moved.
Well, second.
Uh, Bree?
So, I'm sorry, are we adopting this as it's written or are we carving out rows?
Well, we were, we'll adopt it as written and carve out if there's a, a mechanism for some grievance or some reason to pull it out.
And in the past, we, um, the department head will, at the next council meeting, give us an update on what resolution was from the contact that the constituent has. Um, and then council can, uh, make determination at that point whether or not to pull it back out.
We had a very similar situation last year with the person that owned three properties out in Lansing in the same mowing ish-issue, and then Jason was able to meet with them. And I think we still charge him for that assessment, but he was from out of town as well. So that has been our practice before, and I think it's a decent one to, to the department head and take their advice on what we do for, if we have to pull it out.
So before we vote, I, I just want to comment this letter that was sent i- i- from Mr. Deisher, Deisher, um, is saying their household didn't have good communication about why the city was coming to mow. They, they saw people out mowing, they didn't know what it was about, and then it happened again. And so I just wanted to hear from Mr. Seahan, what is our procedure? How do we contact people? Are we confident that, that it's the right, um, way to contact people? Um, and do we need to make any adjustments there?
Sorry.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council. So the process, um, we're, we've been reviewing. I think it's, it's a pretty good communication process. Initially, we, uh, inspect the property, and if the grass is out of compliance of our ordinance, in other words, if it's eight inches or longer, then a citation letter is mailed to that resident, uh, certified mail. And so, um, the, the first offense, there's no fine attached to it. It's just a, a letter with, uh, it references the ordinance and what, and what their options are for communicating back to the city. Uh, and basically states that, uh, we will come back and do a recheck in seven to 10 days. The ordinance reads seven. We usually give them till 10 days, and then we'll do a recheck. And if the, if the property's not mowed at that point, then we contract with the city contracted mowing company that we do, uh, every three years, we go out to bid, um, for the mowing, contracted mowing. So that usually takes another three days for the mowing to happen. So technically, now they're at maybe 12, 13 days. If the contract mower shows up on the property and it's mowed, then they, then that's it. The fine, there's no fine, there's, there's, there's no other fees. Um, if the contract mowing company does mow, then we send the property owner a bill. And if they don't pay the bill, that's what tonight's meeting is about, that they, um, they could be assessed, the bill could be assessed to their, the property taxes. Each subsequent offense, so if they get a second offense, now we send a cite, a letter with a citation. So for example, the first offense, uh, or the second offense is a hundred twenty-five dollar citation. And that's delivered with the letter stating that they're out of compliance a second time. So even if they mow after that letter and we don't contract mow again, that fine still stands. And then those fines do increase over time, uh, and then they have a max. But, um, just to wrap up, we do send it certified mail. It has all the information. Uh, it's like three pages that go out with it. It kind of references the ordinance and what's going on. So typically, we don't see any issues. This particular one, uh, I just, right before this meeting, I ran up, I only saw one line item. I'd have to double-check more, but what I saw was that they were sent one letter, uh, kind of the freebie letter, no charge, and that, uh, we did a recheck and it was not mowed, so that we did a mowing. So the letter was sent June thirteenth, recheck was June twenty-third, 10 days later. Contract mowing was, uh, June twenty-sixth. Uh, I only showed one letter being mailed and no citation, and that they were only charged the $75 admin fee and the $67.50 for mowing, which tells me they were charged for an hour and a half of mowing time. The rate is $45 per hour. Um, so I could look more, and if there's contact information on this letter, I don't know if I saw any, I could get back to this. Actually, I could find it with the address. But I could reach out to this person if that's the council's.
So certified mail means you have to sign for it? So if you're a household where nobody's home, when the mail's delivered, you have to go to the post office during post office hours to get, and that is our only contact. We don't do a door hanger, we don't do anything else. So you legit could just not have ever gotten your certified mail.
That is correct.
Yeah, that seems like a pretty big hole in our process.
Well, you get, you get notice, so they stick a sticky on their door that says you have certified mail. Craig, do you have anything to add?
Well, the ordinance describes the process, and the ordinance is concerned about, you know, due process and documenting that notice was given. The notices are sent to the address that's on file for where the taxes are sent, again, to make sure it's getting to the right people. And if the suggestion is that certified mail is, uh, too much notice because people don't bother to go to the post office to get it, I'm concerned about other forms of notice where we have no documentation that occurred.
No, my concern is if you work Saturdays, and if you work, if your work schedule does not allow you to get to the post office during open post office hours, and there's not an adult at your home to receive it, when do you ever get there?
I mean, we could personally serve them at work by hiring the sheriff to do that and incur those fees. But they're, posting it on the front door is allowed in certain circumstances, but not usually as the due process trigger. So the, the documenting that it was sent and, and that there was, you know, the notice was addressed properly and those sorts of things is what the certified piece gives us, that it was sent. The presumption under the law is that people can collect their mail. Maybe that's a wrong presumption, but that's how all of the law.
I guess that's what I'm saying. I, I, I'm saying at least one resident this year did not get that certified mail. And I feel like this is not the first year that I've heard this same complaint. So I don't know the answers, but we have lots of technology and, and lots of means at our disposal to communicate with people. Um, it, it would seem to me that we could fulfill the statute and send the certified and also hang a door hanger or, and also knock on the door or, I don't know what, something.
Could we do a, could we do just a mailing with an affidavit of mailing? Would that be sufficient?
Well, not under the ordinance the way it's done right now, but, you know, I, I can look at that.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Looked at this before, and the, and the issue is, is all about being able, if this is challenged at some point, being able to properly document what you did and when you did it. And for, for some of these, the statute describes certified mail or personal service as the only two options that are available. I would have to double-check whether, whether grass mowing is in the, in the category, that those are your only two options. But oftentimes, when we look at this, that's what I find, is that our ordinance is drafted the way it's drafted, because that's the minimum requirement under the statute that allows us to do this process. Doesn't mean you can't do other things. You can't, on top of certified mail or on top of personal service, do door hangers or whatever. I would just encourage you to think about things like, what we're talking about here is minimum standards for lawn mowing, and you're over eight inches before the process starts, and then two or three weeks later, you haven't done anything. So it's, it, oh, this is like saying that I didn't get a phone call because my car had a ticket on it, you know? It, you have to look at the car. That's where the ticket is. So, and these sorts of things, you're, you're telling the staff now, there's some additional work that you have to put into all of these. You have to make a trip out to the property, hang a door hanger. They're already concerned about paying the certified mail fee for each one of these. If the people voluntarily comply, those add up all year, but you do get voluntary compliments out. So, so you're balancing, I'm spending, you know, hundreds, if not thousands of dollars sending certified mail, but I get, you know, 80% compliance because of that. We only have a few that don't comply that we have to follow up on. So the, the only thing I would say is, Mr. Seahan may have some opinions about his staff time and, and going out to the site yet another time to hang a door hanger.
Yeah, so I guess what I would love to see us do is, I mean, I, I think probably two things. One is, I don't have a ton of sympathy for if the ordinance, especially around something like this, like have you cut your grass or not, pretty clear. I think we're, we've got some good leniency in terms of, hey, you missed a week, you're on vacation, and the, whatever that looks like. I mean, at the point that somebody's violated an ordinance, we've contacted them about that. They still haven't resolved it, even if they didn't get the contact. I mean, we're now three weeks into, you've got half a jungle sitting there. Sending a certified letter, if you get something on, that says, hey, you have mail that you need to get at the post office, and you make the decision not to get it, I can't imagine that you have to work every single day and every single Saturday between now and whenever they were done. So I don't have a ton of sympathy in that area. That being said, I think Laura's point is fair, and maybe it's a future work session topic for us to look at, is there a, with technology or anything like that, from a customer service standpoint, a way that we can also do it that doesn't add a tremendous burden to staff? Maybe there's not. Maybe we look at it and just go, you know, certified mail, it is what it is, and you know, we've got a pretty finite number of these, and you can't fix everything. But yeah, if there's a, when we send it, it, we do a door sticker or something like that, great. And if not, then...
How, how many Austin residents know that there is a, a weed and grass ordinance?
How many people should just mow their yard? Pretty easy.
Well, I appreciate this conversation, and to that point, I think next year, we already have a plan for a little bit more community outreach and education in the early spring. You know, we've been talking about this. We've talked to Mr. Byram in recent months about this very thing. We have, I think, I just got a slip this morning, we have about $600 in returned certified mail letters. So the best option we've come up with so far, which would be a small added cost to the city, is to send certified mail, so we're complying with the ordinance, but also send letter mail to get to those people that may not be able to get to the post office. So there'll be that slight added cost, but, um, it's not a requirement, but that might help reach more people. I mean, we really want to help people understand and, and educate them. We're not out to like make fines. We're not making money on this. We're, we're just trying to clean up our community. So, um, you know, whatever the best way to help our community, I think, is the way we want to move forward. And if we want to have a discussion at work session, we can certainly do that.
It seems to me that at the very least, at the point you've already paid someone to drive there and measure the grass, they can hang something on the door that says, this is our ordinance. You know, you are or you are not in violation of the ordinance. You will be getting certified mail. Here's how you could comply. Here's some resources to get help mowing your lawn if you are, uh, disabled or elderly or whatever. We're already paying a person to go there. Why we wouldn't try to communicate a little bit at that point, um, is, I just don't understand. I mean, that's why people feel like the city's out to get them, is because they don't know anything about it. Someone showed up and mowed their lawn. This person... Someone showed up and mowed their lawn, this person says they assumed it had something to do with getting a cable install, internet install.
I would also say we've got ten thousand houses and we've got one letter. So nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine people seem to be getting it okay.
Yeah, agreed.
Fair.
All right, so we got a motion, a second, item number ten. Um, looking for adopting the assessment role. Bree.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Item number eleven is a resolution adopting the assessment role for assessments of tree removal. Anyone here in the public wishing to speak on item number eleven, tree removal? Hearing none, council, uh, comments or questions or otherwise looking for resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Bree.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you. Next, item number twelve is a series of administrative citations, starting with twelve A, adopting the assessment role for park and rec. Anybody wishing to speak from the public on twelve A? Hearing none, looking for resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Twelve B, adopting assessment role for zoning. Anyone wishing, on the public wishing to speak on twelve B?
I think that might be me.
That might be you, Jimmy?
I don't know, we'll see.
Well, let's give it a whirl. Name and address, please, Jim.
Jim Sauer, six hundred thirty-eighth Avenue Northeast.
What can we do for you?
I'm assuming this is to do with, uh, what we affectionately call at my house, the circus tent.
Circus tent.
That I have for storing vehicles. Um, first question I have is how, when I went to talk to Holly about this, she was gonna, uh, said I needed to talk to Fred and she was gonna have Fred get ahold of me and see if there's a resolution to this. That was quite some time ago, I haven't heard from anybody, so I thought, okay, well, since there's many other ones in town, maybe it's fine now. But secondly, I'd like to know how it went from, at that point it was four hundred dollars, now the letter I got say it's eleven hundred dollars. I don't know how you feel you can charge me eleven hundred dollars to have a storage structure in my yard. I paid twelve hundred dollars for the structure, by the way.
Is it still up, Jim?
Yes, sir. Um, I made a short drive around town yesterday, about fifteen minutes, I found one, one really shitty one. Two, one that has three of those and a shipping container, another one on Third Avenue, um, another one right out by two eighteen by the airport, and two of them behind Durbin's, a carport behind Durbin's, and one that's, uh, behind Durbin's, it's a wooden structure with a canvas top, and one that's on the street right down from Saint Mark's, just past Skinner's Hill, right in the front of the house. I'll pass these two, who would like these?
I'm wondering, Jim, if those also have assessments to charge them?
I don't know, I'd like to see those letters if, uh, if they are. And I'd like to know, how do I resolve this? Because if I have vehicles, this is to store vehicles, and if I have vehicles setting outside, I get told I can't have vehicles setting outside. So I buy this structure, which looks perfectly fine, it's brand new, there's nothing wrong with it. The first letter I had said, I'm not allowed to have this in my front yard, it's not in my front yard. It's next to my garage. I, I really don't see, how do I resolve this? Do I have somebody come and pour a footing and take the canvas off and tin it like a pole shed? And then it's fine? Or I, I want to know where I go here, but I really don't feel that I want to pay eleven hundred dollars.
And I, I think the overall goal of the city is just to have a neighborhood feel that everybody can appreciate and not have things that might not fit the compliance or not comply with neighborhood aesthetics, but.
So is there something specifically in the language of the, the city rules that say, nobody can have a temporary structure of any kind on a property?
There's probably some wording of that, yeah.
I mean, the structure wasn't permitted and it also exceeds the square footage allowed and number of structures, I believe.
Okay, so then the, the house just around the corner from the old mill that has.
I'll take those and, I'll give those complaints.
Bring, bring all that to Holly, I'm sorry that Fred didn't get back to you, but I would say make an appointment with Holly and bring all those to her attention.
Okay.
And we'll see which ones have the assessments out there.
So where do we set on this eleven hundred dollars thing?
You want to explain the, I don't know how the assessment got to that.
I don't know how it went from four hundred dollars to eleven hundred dollars.
Let her explain, Jim, please. Go ahead, Holly.
Um, the fines have, uh, do increase, uh, each fine that's sent out. And I believe that we're sending out monthly fines, uh, Bree has the dates.
Maybe this should be certified mail, like the lawn mowing then too, perhaps?
There are five citations, five different citations that are sent out.
The lawn mowing would come on your property.
Requires someone to enter the property, that's one of the reasons why it's a higher bar.
Anyway, what now?
So you can please meet with Holly and she'll make an appointment with her and go over all the paperwork you got there, Jim.
This doesn't get put in place tonight?
It will, we will approve it and then if you, you make some arrangement that leads her to believe we can pull it, then we'll pull it. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
Looking for anybody else on, uh, the zoning?
So just to, just on that one, just to clarify, so we need to probably get some resol, adopt it, but with a follow-up of let's figure out what the resolution is. Because if I'm hearing what you're saying, it's a, okay, I know I had an issue, was waiting to resolve it. As I waited to resolve it, it continued to compound. And so I think it's worth us figuring out what that looks like.
We're open to it, that'd be the conversation that Jim and Holly can have. I'm open to that too. Thank you. Looking for a resolution for item number twelve B.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, item number, uh, twelve C, adopting assessment role for rental housing. Anyone here in the public wishing to speak on twelve C rental housing? Hearing none, council, any comments or questions, otherwise it's a resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Bree, please.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you. Uh, twelve D, adopting assessment role for sump pump. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on their sump pump? Twelve D, then council looking for a resolution or also discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Bree.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you. Twelve E, adopting assessment role for building department. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Counsel?
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Item number twelve F, adopting assessment role for lodging establishment. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on twelve F, adopting or the lodging establishment? All right, counsel, twelve F, resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Bree, please.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Uh, twelve G, adopting assessment role for fire code. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Hearing none, council?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you. Uh, twelve H, adopting assessment role for backdated sewer? Anyone is, uh, the council, uh, okay, please step forward and give us your name and address, please, for twelve H, backdated sewer. Welcome, sir, and what's your name and address?
Brandon McFarland, address is four oh nine thirty-sixth Street Northwest.
All right, Brandon, what can we do for you?
Um, we had our sewer put in, I think, four years ago. Last year, city said I owed them money for back sewer. They sent out someone to come and look at our meter for our drain, they said it was working. Um, then they replaced it. So my question is, how am I getting charged for, off that meter when I have no control over that meter? I can't tell if you're monitoring it or not. Um, the city took them four years to get any, any recordable information off there. I'd like to know how that responsibility falls on me to back pay for a non-redundant system.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McFarland. Uh, Stephen, do you have information on this?
Yes, this is part of a sanitary sewer extension neighborhood where they do not have municipal water. So as part of the process, homeowners were required to install a meter on their well to monitor their water usage. And that was all completed by Mr. McFarland or their contractor. The final piece in that was to, uh, report back that everything was complete for a final inspection. That final inspection then triggers Austin Utilities to start reading the meter. So that never happened. The meter sat there and continued ticking away, measuring water usage for, uh, this started in May of twenty twenty-one. So from May of twenty twenty-one, they were hooked up using the sanitary sewer, but they weren't receiving a monthly sewer bill. We found out about this years later, um, went out to read the meter. The reader, meter had been working, it just hadn't been recording back to Austin Utilities. We, we determined a total volume of water usage based on that water or that meter running. We were then able to back calculate what their fees would have been. They essentially were getting sewer for free for a period of time. So what we have charged them here is a cost to, of what they would have paid. There's no extras costs associated with it, it's just actual what you would have paid had they been paying since May of twenty twenty-one. I also figured in some credits for them as well. Uh, they have a pool and there would have been water that would have been used to fill the pool when it had slowly drained down due to a leak that I worked on with Mr. McFarland, came up with a value of what that quantity was, deducted that from their sewer as well. So feel like this is a pretty straightforward, no, no fines, no extras, it's just sewer costs that they would have paid, um, had they completed the final portion of their inspection.
What is the sewer fee a month, fifty-two dollars, fifty-something dollars a month?
It, it varies based on water usage. It, for this property, it was probably around thirty-five to forty dollars a month. And then you, as everyone knows, our sewer rates have increased over the past four or five years, so that was all figured into this calculation.
Does that satisfy Mr. McFarland, or would you like to meet with Mr. Lang again?
I'd like to meet with him because it's, you know, as far as contacting to say that the meter's installed, if I get electrical work done, I'm not calling the inspector. That's on the subcontractor to tell the city, yep, that's installed.
Yeah, sounds like you can just make, meet with Mr. Lang in his office and maybe come to, at least, at least tell your story to him personally and see what you get. But it sounds like he does have good knowledge of it too, so I appreciate it, Mr. McFarland, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for a resolution on item number twelve H?
So moved.
Second.
Bree.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you. Last one is, uh, item number twelve I, adopting the assessment role for vacant property. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on the vacant property assessment? Hearing none, council?
So moved.
Second.
Bree, please.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to awarding a bid, uh, item number thirteen, receiving a bid for the transfer station siding.
We opened bids, uh, informal bids for, took quotes for re-siding the Austin Transfer Station. It was originally built in, uh, the early eighties. And so the, and I believe the siding on the facility is original, so it's about forty years old and it's a very harsh environment with large trucks and equipment, um, and it is in need of replacements. Uh, we had, our budget for this project was seventy thousand dollars. Um, looking back, I believe that's a budget number that we likely established about five years ago and it's carried forward in the budget, not really accounting for inflation. You can see in front of you, we received two bids for the work. The low bidder was Eagle Ridge Construction LLC in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. Uh, these funds would come out of our transfer station fund sixty-two and we would recommend awarding this bid to that contractor.
Excellent, thank you, Stephen. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Lang?
Stephen, so the engineer estimate was seventy-five, we got a bid that was like sixty percent more and another bid that was like three times this much. Do we feel like we got enough bids to really have a handle as to what this project should cost?
Our, our budget was seventy thousand. Um, we didn't put necessarily an engineer's estimate to it. We don't do this type of, this isn't a street reconstruction project that we do every year, so it's, it's a little more difficult for us to put an estimate to it. So I'm sorry, I don't know what our estimate would have been had we estimated this project.
Okay.
Um, but the only thing I can say is I, I don't think we kept up with our budget number from three or four or five years ago when we established it. And I think that's why it's making this look considerably higher is because we didn't account our budget for inflation.
And is the extra fifty grand, I know there's a fund that's going to be paying for this, is that pushing other work that we need to have done farther down the road because we've depleted the fund more than anticipated?
No, no, it is not. Um, the other work that we have planned at the transfer station in the upcoming five to ten years will still fit within the, the budget and the capacity that we have in the fund.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions, otherwise looking for a resolution?
Stephen, the fund, just for clarification, where do the dollars from that fund come from? Are those tax levy dollars that go in or are those like our transfer fees that we rent out?
Yeah, the, the fund grew through lease agreements that we had with the operator of the transfer station over all of these years. Um, we, we need to watch the fund closely because we're not generating as much revenue through leases as we used to at five, ten, fifteen years ago. So we're watched, keeping an eye on it, but we have a pretty good surplus there through those lease agreements that occurred in the nineties and two thousands, um, to be able to complete this work and as I said, other work that we have planned in the future.
Got it, so these aren't necessarily tax dollars as much as, hey, somebody has operated this as part of that agreement to operate it, we put money aside off the revenue of that, knowing that eventually you're going to have to replace doors and siding and stuff like that.
To my knowledge, the fund was created, yep, as you described. I, to my knowledge, I don't believe there's tax levy dollars in that fund.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Looking for a resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. On to petitions and requests. Item number 14 is a resolution approving authorized individuals for the Northland Securities Incorporated account and approving interim finance director. Craig?
Uh, thank you, mayor members. Uh, Northland Securities asked that we approve this by resolution with changes, uh, to the finance director position that we've visited about. Uh, we need to take formal action to, uh, certify that to them.
Thank you, Craig. Counsel, any questions on this item?
So what exactly are we approving them to do?
Uh, to add Melissa Wilson as a account representative and myself.
Got it. Okay. Yep, that seems fair.
Uh, any other questions? Otherwise looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Bree?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Item number 15 is a motion authorizing the city clerk to sign a waiver stating the city does not waive the statutory tort limits. Bree?
Attached, you're going to find a waiver form that's required from our insurance carriers, the legal Minnesota cities. We're required to pass the motion authorizing the city recorder, now city clerk, to sign the waiver indicating the city does not waive the statutory tort limits. This identifies the maximum amount a claimant could receive for a single occurrence, which the statutory limit applies to $500,000. Also, all the total claimants would be able to receive from any single event would be limited to 1.5 million. If the city waives these limits, it could be, it could expose us to too much greater loss in the event we were to be sued under, for any event that falls under the statute. However, claims to which the statutory municipal tort limits do not apply are not affected by this decision. If you have any questions, please contact the finance department.
Thank you, Bree. Counsel, any questions on this one? Something we do every year?
Move to approve.
Uh, you have a second? Obala?
That was Fisher.
Fish. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16, uh, proving, is a resolution approving agreement with the Joint Law Enforcement Center with Mauro County. Craig?
Thank you, mayor members. This is a preliminary agreement with Mauro County for APD to occupy part of their building and the associated cost at 14.89% of the overall building. Uh, this is moving from a fixed amount, uh, to a variable actual cost amount, something that we have to track very closely to keep an eye on, better terribly speaking. This also transitions the IT services, uh, will be asking for funding for council at a later date on this item, but does provide an avenue for that to transpire. It also transitions record staff to being city employees with the police chief providing oversight of them. Uh, over time, this also transitions records management systems to ProPhoenix. Upfront costs of that are 135,179 based on our estimated amount of users. Be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thanks, Craig. Counsel, any questions on this item?
So as we talk about joint law enforcement center, can we just maybe talk a little bit more about the background and kind of why we're making the changes? And then I know we're looking at, you know, down the road, potentially needing to update or replace this, you know, provide maybe a little bit of color around some of the maybe areas where it falls a little bit short of what we'd love for a modern police department?
Chief McKee, you want to provide a little color to why we're making the arrangements this way?
We've historically always had these joint powers arrangements. And I think in the opening paragraphs, it talks a lot about those previous ones. Uh, four or five years ago, we went, uh, in a little different direction to a set fee, uh, in part, uh, due to some, um, moving of dispatch costs, uh, to the county levy. However, that was a break from a, a written agreement and we're looking to go back to a written agreement again, which just represents prior to the set fee, some of that percentage cost sharing had existed in those prior ones. Now, looking forward, certainly a timeline, if, if, if another building happens, that would be outside of my reach. Uh, but it is one of those things, we, we've talked about it, uh, we've done a space study. I don't know the direction both partners would go. I don't know if the county would elect to partner with the city if we did something new. So some of the changes are representative of that forward thinking and thinking about it. Some like the IT or do, if, if we had gone to our own space, we'd, we'd be doing those IT things at some point in time. We're doing them in part because of what happened with the county this summer. Um, is kind of driving that. Similarly with the, with the records. That was a cost piece that we've historically built in anyways, but it left us with no control over who we were hiring, who we were employing, what they were doing on day to day. They, they weren't answerable to myself or the captain or anyone in, with our building. And so again, it's representative of if we were to, at some point in the future, that, that may happen. We felt it best to have that happen now. That's also tied to some of the language you see about that separation of data. Due to, again, if we ever went in a different space other than jointly, and again, beyond my time, we'd have those separations happen. But with this summer's, um, o- event in the county IT, they, they would like, and our partners above us, BCA, et cetera, are rep- are, are recognizing, we need you to have separation. We need you to have silos. We need to separate our data. Um, you know, the data requests we get, they would prefer run through city people alone. They realize that break has to have these employees, employees have attrition, the same things you're going through right now on ours. And so that's really the backstory of where a lot of these pieces are built in. Uh, ProPhoenix, it's that records management system. This one is more modern. I think our staff will like it a lot more. But that's a backbone piece that we do change to or go to every, every so often. But when your phone call comes in, you know, we, we had a discussion about how do we track like certified mail? Like when your phone call comes in from dispatch and ICR gets created, notes are going in. Who's getting sent to one, at one point in time? What kind of contacts being made? We're radioing stuff back. They're typing notes. And it's like a lot of like reports I get, if I am being asked, hey, what, who'd you contact? What happened? Yeah, I get, I get a report mechanism, but it's all tied to all the notes, all the times. And so that's represented in there about, about making that change. So you got a lot of different pieces within what we're basically modernizing and going to, uh, a written agreement, really replacing one from the nineties.
So fair to say that as we think about it, there's still a benefit of being together city, county. We still have cost efficiencies, but as we think about modern policing, as we think about, you know, what the state is asking us to do in terms of record management and things like that, probably better to have those separate.
Correct. And like I said, that, we're pushed to it by what happened this summer. It's in, and again, it's a, it's a good, certainly a lot more appreciation for IT, IT systems. You can see it with, with cities as well that, that had some of those happens. I know it happens in the corporate world, uh, but it's a, it's a good, to build some silos, to build some separation, to build some redundancy is good. But in so doing that, it means we only work with our data versus them. And, and so like I said, that's a piece of it. I think the cost sharing here is, is fair to all of us. You know, I, I have opinions on liking at some point in time for energy efficiency, retention, recruitment, all those things. I'd, I'd like to see a new law enforcement center for the next generation. Wouldn't be me. But like I said, a lot of this is just tying this into a new agreement. I think the cost sharing's fair. I certainly enjoy working with the deputies on a daily basis. But some of these, we, we do need to break out and some like the records clerks. We're breaking them out in a way, but, but we, we have been paying for them anyways. This though says our, our payment will ultimately allow us to hire our own and have this complete control over who are applicants, how we pick them, and they answer only to, to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, McKee.
Thank you.
Any other questions on item number 16? Looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Bree?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Item number 17 is a resolution approving the responsible authority and compliance officer for data requests. Craig?
Uh, thank you, mayor members. This is another update for the finance director, changes that we've talked about. This, uh, responsibility previously fell to the director of administrative services. It'd be transferred to the city administrator and policies, guidelines and procedures would be updated as indicated. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Uh, looking for a resolution for item number 17. So moved.
Second.
Bree, please.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Item number 18 is a resolution authorizing the renewal of the housing tax abatement program for, uh, 2026 to 2028.
Thank you, mayor members. The Austin Homes Initiative, uh, is otherwise known as our tax abatement program. It expires December 31st of this year. We originally adopted the program in August of 2016, uh, meeting that we had with the school district, Mauro County on April 14th. I think there was broad agreement for renewal of the program. This would brick, this would establish a new three-year term from January 1st, 2026 to December 31st, 2028. Uh, estimated, uh, construction value from the program since inception has been about $30 million. Uh, council action is requested to approve the updated policy included as exhibit one.
Thank you, Craig. Counsel, any questions for this item?
I think it's been an incredibly beneficial program. And I mean, I think probably all of us up here, when we first ran, we ran on how do we improve housing? I think this has been very, very effective at, I mean, a $30 million expansion in housing. I mean, we just approved again tonight. Seems like every other meeting, we've got, you know, abatements for new housing that wouldn't take place otherwise. So I'm very much in favor of it.
Very good.
And I agree with that. As a someone who's beneficiary for this, I think it has helped me. Five years, no tax, at the end of the year, you get this. I think this is a great thing. We can advertise more in Austin to bring more people move to Austin. My neighbor is still looking to invite more people, so we're, uh, looking for more housing. So if you want to be in the cool neighborhood, nature rich, welcome. So I'm a big favor of this.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Otherwise looking for a resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Bree?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Uh, moving on to item number 19 is a resolution citing the public hearing for October 20th, 2025 for street improvement project assessments. Stephen?
Yes, this is just for the Nature's Ridge project that, uh, was set up on a little different time schedule. So we're requesting this for the hearing.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Bree?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you. Item number 20 is a resolution approving the 2026 fee schedule. Bree?
Want to have filled in the clerk's office, worked with the department heads to establish the license fees and miscellaneous operational fees for 2026. Uh, you can see the changes, um, indicated in the council packet. We're requesting that council approve these and they become effective on October 6th. Let us know if you have any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Bree. Counsel, any questions? Otherwise looking for a resolution approving the 2026 fee schedule.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bree?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Thank you, Bree. Item number 21 is a resolution approving an employee separation incentive. Craig?
Thank you, mayor members. At our, uh, 9/22, uh, council meeting, I was instructed along with, uh, Ms. Wakeman to come forward with a separation incentive program. That's before you this evening. I want to thank, uh, Trish Wakeman and Attorney Byram for their help in this as well. This is focused on departments which have some capacity, albeit, um, uh, for reductions in their force, uh, albeit the opportunity that some of these modifications will take longer to complete. Um, we did built in some flexibility for other positions to be considered, but those would be done so on a request basis. Any employee would have to have 10 years of service with the city. The incentive is set at $20,000 in a lump sum payment or towards healthcare or a combination thereof. There is a 45-day, uh, program period for rollout and a 15-day rescension, uh, provision as well. These are both, uh, related to both federal and state law provisions. The city reserves a right to modify or change the terms. Approval of the program is included as exhibit one. Be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thanks, Craig. Counsel, any questions?
No, I think this, and really good work on this, and I think this is the, you know, kind of best of a series of tough choices. So I would move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, um.
So I just have a quick question on, on a timeline. We approved tonight. It's made available to employees tomorrow. If we don't get anyone coming forward, we need probably two to take early retirement to make our budget. If we don't get anybody coming forward, how much time will we have before the end of the year to figure out what, what we're going to cut?
Uh, not a lot, um, with our, uh, truth and taxation hearing. At the start of the month, we wouldn't have much to work with. I think as it's drafted now in the budget, it's, um, comes out of contingency. So our goal is to have this, uh, decided by, with separation by December 31st of, of this year. So we would have to, uh, buy down reserves in order to span past the end of this year. It's something we can do, but I think counsel has generally said the sooner the better would be our objective.
Anybody else have any questions? That was very well done. I appreciate the employees', um, consideration. I know it might be a win-win for both if there is some employees that are looking for a, a titch earlier retirement. But, uh, I, I think the word is pretty much out already, right? It's a department head meeting, so I don't think the word is going to be out by tomorrow. I think it's already there, but, um, certainly just an offering to see if we can't get the budget in shape a little better with that incentive program. So with that, looking for a resolution?
So moved.
I think we already had one in a second.
Did we?
Yeah, either way. We're too efficient.
Thank you. Bree?
Councilmember Fisher.
Nay.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes fu- three, two.
Thank you, Bree. Uh, on to item number 22 is a resolution accepting the donation of, from the Austin Area Pickleball Association for $35,000 for the pickleball court engineering design. Uh, thank them for the generosity and trying to move that pickleball courts for closer to completion. Counsel, looking for a resolution approving that donation?
Did they get a certificate for like an honorary honorary council member at this point? Because they've been to more meetings than most of the rest of us.
Quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah. I would move to approve.
Second.
Uh, Bree?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Very good. Thank you, Bree. Item number 23 is a motion granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following location. 23A, the address is 515 11th Avenue Southwest, the Beaman Property. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens, uh, in the audience wishing to speak with counsel of items that weren't on the agenda? Hearing none? Uh, under reports and recommendations, Craig?
I have nothing. Julie Kleinfeldt has an item.
Julie?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council members. I just wanted to make sure everyone puts on their calendar next Thursday, October 16th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We will be welcoming Millie the Mill Pond Monster to Austin Public Library. We were able to do a community collaboration grant, um, in conjunction with the welding class at the high school. And they have created Millie for us. The story behind Millie is that she wandered the northern waterways and followed her nose to Austin and found a really welcoming committee. And she will be used as a local attraction and, um, something for us to kind of focus some of our programming around. The grant that we received, we've had so many donations, people really liked the idea. And we've had so many donations that actually a lot of the grant money that we had planned on to use for materials will be able to go towards programming. So it's just kind of a fun thing, um, based on, um, a, a tree that had come down in 2024 in the flood and was pushed up against the shores, right outside of the, the shores, the water edge of the pond that staff found and said, hey, we should go put some googly eyes on that and that could be our mascot. So it was just kind of a fun thing that came up. And we thank the, um, Arts and Cultural Heritage Legacy Fund that in cooperation with Selco, our regional library system that gave us that money for that project. So next Thursday at the library between 4:00 and 6:00, we have an original song made by local artist Will Bjorn Dahl about Millie that we're going to present and we'll have cookies. It'll be a lot of fun, so stop by.
Thursday, October 16th, 4:00 to 6:00.
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else have anything, Craig?
No.
On to counsel. Uh, Jason?
Um, only thing I have is had an opportunity to go to a conference of national kind of council members and mayors in Sioux Falls this past week. Couple takeaways for our group. One is, I know we're working through some challenging situations. We are far from alone. Um, number of other communities in Minnesota as well as across the country. I think just the overall, how do you balance taxpayers with inflation and some of the challenges? Um, not that it makes it easier to deal with, but we are far from alone in that. The other piece is, you know, looking as we think about the comprehensive plan and the long-term development.
the long-term development, the work that Sioux Falls has done proactively developing around that river that runs through downtown, I think becomes really encouraging as we think about how we make that into more of an asset. And I know that there's flood mitigation stuff that we've got to continue to work through, but it has just totally transformed that community and just the vibe and the overall kind of like attractiveness that they have in terms of employers and housing and things like that. And so I'm super optimistic about the work that we're doing because I think there's just a ton of untapped potential. So good.
Appreciate that, Jason. Mosty?
Nothing, your honor.
Laura?
Yes, the Culture and Arts Commission has put out a call for art. So youth who live in Mauro County, age fourteen to twenty-two, are invited to submit art. The designs will be, go through a jury process, and then those awarded will be printed onto graphic wraps to go on utility boxes here in Austin. So it's a way to give our youth some spotlight, but also to deter tagging on the utility boxes. Quality art murals and installations, particularly ones that are locally made and have local artists, have been shown to deter tagging as well as anything. So that's grant funded through C Mac, and we're, we're calling for art now. So you can find out more information on the Austin Area Arts website. I also want to call out a few things with Parks, Recs, Rec and Forestry. The Todd Park Playground is getting an upgrade. I understand many, many people who saw large equipment at Todd Park were worried about the robot slide. It is fine. It's not going anywhere. We just installed new playground around it. It will be there. And the deer hunt has begun at the nature center. It's fine to still, not at the nature center. Oh, sorry.
The fifteenth for the nature center.
Other, other locations that has begun. Thank you. So it's begun at other locations, starting the fifteenth, that will be at the nature center. It's still okay to go on the trails. It's never a bad idea to get that orange hat or something to make yourself very visible on the nature center trails. And then finally, I wanted to thank our parks director, Mr. Sehan, for partnering with Austin Public Schools and the Austin Transition Program. This is a program for Austin students who are part of the special ed department and want to get job training and be ready for leaving high school. So they now can have, get, get on the job training by working in the park systems. And my understanding is the students love the chance to be outside, and if it's bad weather and they don't get to go do their parks job, they're really disappointed. So this is a way that the city and the school district are partnering together to give a really excellent experience to students who need it and also get work done at our parks and, and for our city in an efficient way. So thank you for that, the extra it takes to coordinate that. I think it's well worth your time.
Very good. Thank you, Laura. Obala?
Nothing, your honor.
Holly?
Nothing, your honor.
The only thing I have to add is Laura, thank you for bringing that to everybody's attention, that transition program. Craig and I got to go out and kick off the second year of that. And if you're ever having a bad day, go hang out with those kids, and you will no longer have a bad day.
That's right.
It was absolutely fascinating and just really, really powerful stuff. So they appreciate the work they do. We appreciate the work they do. It's very much a win-win. And those teachers that are guiding them through this program are amazing as well. Also, the urban hunt, I mean, we've been doing this about eight years now, maybe on a ten-year, we think we, we calendarized it for a ten-year term, probably coming on that. How many qualified hunters did you get this year?
I believe we filled every spot but one. I want to say it's like thirty-eight throughout town. We did last year remove, or, or we don't have currently any Hormel properties, but we did expand to a few other city properties this year. So it's always a work in progress. I have to give credit to our staff, Luke Reese and Riley Donovan, and especially Trish Brandon, who really make that program happen and work really well with the hunters and other people. It's been, been a great program.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Also have the work anniversaries of our folks that were hired in October. We have Rick Weiner, twenty-six years with the sewer maintenance. Troy Tigner with fire, twenty-six years. Greg Yocum, street department, twenty years. Tony Hill, street department, twenty years. Holly Wallace, congratulations, Holly, eleven years, planning and zoning. Travis Martin with police, eleven years. Dwayne Salinas, buildings, seven years. Jeff Marks, police, six years. Daniel Osborne, police, six years. Brady Johnson, police, six years. Nick Zago, police, six years. Clint Perkapile, wastewater treatment plant, five years. Raleigh White soul, park and rec forestry, two years. And Caleb Ward, park rec, rec and forestry, one year. We appreciate the work they do and the longevity that they do offer the city of Austin. So thank those folks for their years of service. With that, take a motion to adjourn to our work session, which will be about five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.